I call to order the planning commission meeting for October 18th, 2022. And the first order of business is public comments. We welcome our community members to the playing commissions meeting tonight. In this forum, the planning commission does not engage or dialogue with the public. The primary role of the plan commission is to listen. We will hear from our onsite guests first, followed by our virtual guests. If you are online, please use the raise hand feature now if you wish to speak. All guests must address comments to the chair and the city planning commissioners. The clerk will acknowledge your request and call your name when it is your turn. Your time will start when we confirm that the that we can hear you. Due to time constraints and to provide a fair time to all community members, we must limit each speaker to three minutes. We will not split your time with others or reset your time. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. Screen sharing is not allowed. You can submit materials to the playing commission or clerk in advance. Materials submitted after the meeting will be provided to the commission for the next meeting. So tonight, please do not comment on the items included in the public hearing, which is basically the TOD issues. This meeting is being recorded. We appreciate your time to express your comments. So we're going to do the on here first.
Yes, we're going to do our onsite guest first. We're going to start with John Hendrickson, Mr. Hendrickson, if you could make your way to the podium and then Brian Hooten, Houghton, Mark Carpenter, and then Elizabeth Mooney.
Good evening, members. I'm John Hendrickson, Kenmore, Washington.
Mr. Hendrickson, could you give me just one minute to get the timer on screen? Thank you. Sorry about that.
I served on the city council from two or eight years, 2004 through 11. Okay, good evening. Tonight I wanted to address the issue of land use regarding the protection of the character of our single family neighborhoods. I'm concerned about a culture of bullying and manipulation of the public process by city management, particularly with the issue of racism. Hopefully you realize that the advancement of the missing middle zoning mimicked the ADU zoning that you guys put out two years ago. Who passed a ADU in the spring of 2020. In late July, the city council vastly expanded it to all over the city, changed it from duplex to triplex and eliminated the homeowner ownership occupancy requirement. Took summer recess in August, put out a flyer, took a quick vote in September. Same thing's going on with the missing middle here. Guys passed it in the spring. They took it in July and expanded it all over Kenmore and then put out a flyer and tried to run it and ram it through. And in the middle of all this, well, you have the city in September putting out this this top four thing on September 9th, calling the city that this missing middle is going to address historic segregation. And you know, there's a lot of ideological rhetoric around this missing middle and about single family homes are racist and the people are racist and it's founded in in all this unhealthy value system, which I don't agree with. And so I noticed when the city council or not the city council, but the Debbie Bent gave you guys in July of 2021, their goals, they crossed out protecting the character of our single family neighborhoods. And Debbie wrote in her letter said, supporting the character of single family neighborhoods and family friendly, small town feel are ill defined and could be read as exclusionary. Small town feeling could also imply insularity and that new residents won't fit in. So on September 14th, when the planning commission said, hey, wait a minute, I'm concerned that we're eliminating this protecting the character of a single family neighborhood. Lori Anderson interrupted and said, no, he said, she wanted to push back and said, it means no change, that different people would not be welcome, that it has a negative connotation. And and with that, Tracy was a neighbor of mine, said, we need to remediate mistakes of the past regarding exclusionary zoning. So supporting this rhetoric. And so I'd like to ask for documentation of support of your accusations of racism and wrongs of the past that is driving this zoning and killing really.
Mr. Henderson, your time is up. Thank you.
Please document it so we can review it and publish it.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker.
My name is Brian Houghton from Kenmore, Washington. Meaning the challenge associated with housing is never a simple issue to tackle. You must plan for the future without significantly impacting the people who live nearby. The TOD zoning issue is one of those challenges.
Mister, I have, I'm sorry to interrupt you. However, let's stop this time, please. It is important that you address the TOD during the public hearing and not during public comments. I don't mean, I mean, you'll have plenty of time to do it at that time, but the we have to have those on record for public hearing.
Great. We can always come back on that. That's more than welcome.
Just a few minutes. So did you have anything on another topic?
You know, generally we look on being started. We look at things like sidewalks, crosswalks, safety, parking in our neighborhood. We lack parking. We have way too many people already. There's no, there's two and a half blocks down the street. There's a limited amount of parking. There's no crosswalks to even get there. We live on a busy street, northeast stadia. It's it's a nightmare for a lot of people. It's dangerous just being out walking your dog along the along the side or trying to cross over. There's, there's a lot of areas that are need fixing in our neighborhood. When we get back to the other side, that feeds into more comments on that as well. Because it does have an impact as far as those decisions in that area.
Thank you very much for your time and for being here with your comments.
Um, I'd like to make an announcement for our onsite guests. We have a public hearing sign in sheet for those comments. If you'd like to sign in to comment on the public hearing, we'll place it over here for you. So at this point, we can move forward with the regular public comments if you'd still like to get one.
Hi, planning council. Good to see you and more people in your room. I'm Elizabeth Mooney and I've lived in Kenmore since 1995. So generally, I would just like to say that one of there are few people that I talked to before coming here and they, I think, have sentiments that I want to share with you. One is Marilyn Knudsen and she lives over on Swamp Creek and has been a steward of that wetland for years, decades. She's very wise. She knows real estate and I listened to her. And she said to me, this process of planning a city requires a long, slow process. Don't rush this. And you can freshen your ideas with new input. So what I've noticed sort of ironically, that your hard work during COVID, when you were all by yourselves in rectangles and nobody could drive around. I'm sure it was a lonely process and we did not always come to watch the movie at all. You know, we would make dinner and do something else while you all worked on and read and wordsmith. Thank you. So you're still there and I want to just say that people like Marilyn are there and what you did is you lit a fire in a whole lot of anti rezoned, single family housing people. And I am trying to get those people to come in on your nights besides just on city council nights. So I don't know how to do it, but again, what Marilyn was talking about is that we all have an idea and it comes up, but when we can get input from other people, it's going to get better. One thing that you have mentioned, and I'm looking at Christiana and Tracy in particular. I've chatted with Dwight, but it has to do with trees, streams, wetlands and not cutting them down when a whole bunch of developers get exemptions. So there's this idea that you've presented that has to do with taking a step back. And instead of drawing a bunch of pretty colors and lines that are like this, going out ahead of time and slowing down your process of planning these TODs or I mean, sorry, not going to talk about TODs in particular until the hearing, but you do an ecological zoning. And the only way to do that is to get your volunteers, because I've chatted briefly with staff about how to do this. And you bring in all these people that now are paying attention a lot better and go someplace fun, like the breweries or the stoop or the hangar. And then we bring in and Perk can probably help bring this in because it will be about the environment. And we bring people who want to say, I have five, I have five trees in my house and I want it on the map that Lori can make sure it gets on the critical map. I have a wetland. It's going to perhaps not make it possible for them to build a second ADU, but that's okay. If these are the people who are the stewards and the environmentalists, let's do the ecological zoning and create something that we will be proud of. And then the salmon can come back and we can count them. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Appreciate your time coming out tonight. Madam Clerk.
Mark, were you going to hold off until the public hearing?
Well, because under the rules and the and the laws that we have to follow, that if the comments have to do with that item that's under the public hearing, which is the TOD item, that has to be done under the public hearing for the record. And if if you do it under comments, then it's not the same. And we want to make sure the your comments are on the record because that public hearing record for sure is well stated to the council when we pass this on. Now certainly it's true, they can see and we request from staff that public comments as we've had over the last couple of months are also forwarded, but they're not as weighted as heavy as those comments given at the public hearing. And that's also the way the why the government, the state requires this process. So this, this is the only public hearing unless like what happened on the other, the missing middle, if the council makes a major change to what we move on, then they have to have a hearing. But if there's no change, then this hearing is it. So that's why it's important that the TOD issues stay in the public hearing because that's on the record. Does that make sense to you? I don't mean to be confusing, but yeah, go ahead.
Maybe to clarify, maybe to clarify, this evening, we're almost having two citizen comment periods. One is strictly for TOD, which is in the public hearing. The other is citizen comments, which addresses everything else, other concerns that people have. So this TOD specific comments come in the public hearing later. So right now, this is the portion where it's all other comments, but we ask that you hold the TOD comments for the TOD specific citizen comment period. Because like Chair Thompson said, that'll be attached with this stuff when it goes to the city council. And that's why we we ask that you hold the TOD comments for that TOD specific comment period.
All right. So next.
Okay, so we have no other onsite guest signed up for a public comment at this. Well, we have our onsite guest sign in. We have two attendees online, Scott Insley and Stacy V, who have signed up for public comment. Marcia Fisher. You're fine. Go ahead, Marcia.
Good evening. I'm Marcia Fisher here in Kenmore. I am late to the dance. I've never attended, never spoken before. It's just a general observation of certain things. I think public input on all issues is important and I would like to echo the last person's comments about making sure that your community, which is the essence of Kenmore, is a part and invested in whatever progress is going to be made. One thing that comes to my mind in terms of, I don't want to say frustration, but Lake Point. Now I happen to have lived in Kenmore majority of my life. When Kenmore, actually, my father tells a story about how Lake Point is really arose partly because of the lock system when the lake was lowered. But then again, it also was the refuge for the construction of I-5. And my father remembers the cars coming and dumping the debris out there. And I know that the council has tried for years or the city as a whole has tried to make that a whether it was mixed use or retail provision. And for years, it's failed. For years, the renewal of that permit continues. And I guess at some point I would say, is there really a valuable piece of property for what is in your thinking of in terms of mixed use? Or is there a better function that could be utilized with that property such as the community? It's an absolutely lovely place for our environment here, which is that vista is truly one of the crowning jewels of Kenmore. And I think that the direction, although I understand years ago prior to our incorporation, that is what the prior owners were hoping for. It has never developed. And at some point, I think as a community and perhaps of the leadership of planning, it could be a more focal point for this community, be an attraction for people to come to Kenmore, utilizing the natural path of the Burke and Mottrell to attract people to Kenmore, not just for a lifetime of living, but also for the enjoyment of a day's outing. So I urge the council, the planning committee sometime to think about really, is it feasible, profitable, important? Will it ever really come to fruition to actually have a mixed use property? Mixed use development of that property. And so I asked, you know, as you're considering the future of your planning in that one aspect, really reexamine, what could that property be utilized other than for commercial venture as opposed to say the longevity of the community that could is Kenmore? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and coming down. Do we have now, we do not have anyone else here, correct?
On, yes, we're all done with onsite comments. We're going to move to our virtual participants and we have Scott, I believe he just got transferred over to a panelist. Scott, go ahead and unmute.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I'm not sure what I did there. I have not been participating in these public discussions that I plan on to. I'm not convinced these comments that citizens provide are seriously considered. It seems like the planning commission and the council pretty much swivel their hips and do what they feel like they want to do, like the cozy tavern. Is that not something that would have been up for a citizen vote on how you guys leverage that property and expand your tax base? It seems like there's a lot of one way communication. I know, I'll wait for the public hearing, but I've never heard any responses to these city meetings that I've been attended to. It's just citizens expousing their opinions, which it seems to be falling on deaf ears. I won't mention TOD, but what are all, what's the end result of these public meetings? When the planning commission and the council have no responses to the citizens' questions and comments? It seems like these public meetings are basically a checkbox, which many people are not familiar with, and I think that's the way the city council and the planning commission desires it because less participation makes your jobs easier in ramrodding many of these agenda items through the public without the due diligence of getting the citizens involved. There's very minimal communication of how these meetings work, what the outcomes of these meetings are and the importance of Kenmore citizens becoming involved. Again, I do want to speak about TOD, but I will not. There is just a lot of swiveling of the hips. It would seem to my estimation that both the council and the planning commission rely upon nonparticipation to go ahead. And as you guys have mentioned in multitude, many articles where Kenmore takes initiatives, they don't wait to make a decision. They take it upon themselves to make decisions in the best interest of the citizens. But I don't feel that they give adequate citizen consideration in your decision making. So I thank you for your time. I will continue to research and learn these processes, which I am not versed in. But I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Scott, thank you for letting us know how you feel and your time tonight. We have one more person.
We have two more. Next, we have Stacy Valenzuela and after that we have Christopher Olson. Stacy, go ahead and unmute.
Good evening, Stacy Valenzuela. Kenmore, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I missed a few meetings, but I want to continue to thank the commission so much for continuing to bring forward so many great points, questions and concerns for our residents, businesses and city. A lot of new people do not know how much great work you do. Kenmore City Council adopted adding affordable housing and climate action plan to their top priorities a few years ago. After failure of a developer to include proper affordable housing as submitted, Kenmore passed a six month moratorium and then continued to pass to where the to encourage multiple family with requirement of 25% affordable housing units in the 50 to 30% AMI or below minimum. Somehow the current developer in the city did not get the same requirement. At the planning department developers panel meeting, most of the developers agreed that requiring the 25% or more units, very low AMI affordable housing is reasonable and the only way to increase inventory needed. Also recently seen a picture of Tolochtees Park, formerly Squire's Landing, landing, which shows the destruction of the natural habitat, grandfather trees, cemented wetlands that will have runoff. Please continue to protect our hair and wickerie wetlands and trees. Please continue to protect and preserve our natural resources. That is why we love Kenmore. It's so appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stacy, for your comments and your time tonight.
Next, excuse me. Next, we have Christopher Olson. Christopher, go ahead.
Sorry, give me one moment here, trying to get my situation figured out. First time calling in, I'm unfortunately still at work at the moment. Hello, I'm Chris Olson. I am a resident of Kenmore and I'm just calling in tonight to, well, later on, talk about TOD, but for now, just had a few other related comments. I think the big comment I would like to make right now is that in my experience, the city has done a good job of listening. And we live in a representative democracy, right? We elect people to go and take the time and do the research and learn and get involved and really figure out what needs to be done. Because it's not realistic or reasonable for everybody to do that. So I just want to emphasize that I trust a lot of the decisions that you guys have been making. And I appreciate the comment responses and feedback that are provided in text that get put out by people like Lori and others and are posted onto the city's website. In addition to that, I would like to continue to see progress on the excess of parking that we have. Historically, we have overbuilt parking for most uses. People want parking where they live. That makes sense, but in a lot of other areas, we simply have too much and it makes our cities harder to walk through, harder to bike through, pushes things further apart from each other, which also makes it more difficult to walk and makes it difficult to use things like transit. So by reducing parking minimums or even abolishing parking minimums and leaving it up to people on what they want for their property, how much parking they feel they need as opposed to creating some standard that is set by the government, I think is is better for everybody. In addition, I'm sad to see that missing middle did not end up going through. I understand why it didn't, given the strong pushback on it. However, I think it's important that people understand where missing middle or why single family is what it is. The mass majority of property in this country is zoned for single family. It's something like 75% or more of the land is for single family. And city of Kenmore, I believe it's 70%. So when I hear people talk about blanket zoning or they talk about what is fair or unfair land use decisions, I would just like to remind them that single family is more restrictive than missing middle. Missing middle simply gives people the option to use their land in different ways. I grew up in a duplex where I had neighbors on the other side of the wall. I never heard them. If we wanted to talk, I talked to them outside and it worked out well for me. I understand why people might not want townhomes or changes to the character of their neighborhood. And for many people, they would not be impacted by this. And I really encourage them to do more reading and listen with an open heart to these things. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. I appreciate your time and your information that you provided us. Do we have anyone else?
No, we have no more public comments.
Okay, last call. Okay, so the public comments period is closed. I would like to make a comment for those that are listening and those that are here. Our agendas, as far as our work plan is provided to us by the council. They have what's called a docket. And they decide this docket once a year unless there's an emergency that comes up. And then they give us an idea with regard to when they need to have our work done so that they can do their work. And we here on the council have chatted occasionally about Lake Point, but it is not something that is on our docket and by that point we cannot do anything about it. So I just wanted to bring that up that although many of us have interests and not just Lake Point, but other interests, we are restricted by law and by the council that we can must stay on our on our docket. And one of the main things for the planning commission is to work on the comprehensive plan, which has quite a few elements and the docket spells out which elements we take. And then at a point in time, which is two years from now, 24, the entire comprehensive plan then with all these elements is put together and we have to. And we have to send that off to the council for them to adopt. And so, and then that is a cycle in state government that's spelled out and the county and how, what we have to do as a city. So I just wanted to, though some of you might think that we are not listening. We are always listening and, but sometimes our hands are tied with regard to speaking up about it officially. Just wanted to let you all know. Okay. With that, is there any any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, without objection, we will, the minutes for September 20th, 2022 and October 4th, 2022 are adopted. So how many people do you know that we have? Do you have any idea of how many people have signed in for the public hearing?
For our onsite guests, we have two signed in for the public hearing and online, so far we have one hand up.
Okay, I would.
Now, all the hands are going up. And if anybody else would like to sign in, I'm gonna put the sheet back.
I would entertain a motion to expand our three-minute comments to four minutes. If Chairman Lutzis.
I am not the chairman, you are, but I will second your motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to extend. Oh, yeah, that's bad. Extend the time allotment for the public hearing on this occasion to four minutes. Is there any objection? Hearing none, it's adopted.
Commissioner Vanderlin? I'm so sorry, Chair Thompson. Well, we're all very rusty tonight. I apologize. Four minutes or five?
Four minutes.
Four minutes. Okay, thank you.
Instead of three. All right.
So Chair Thompson, before you open the public hearing, staff has a brief PowerPoint presentation to give an overview about what the public hearing is about for the Transit Oriented Development District.
We are here with bated breath to hear the PowerPoint presentation. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good evening. So we're here to talk about Transit Oriented Development or TOD. What is TOD? It is the concentrated pedestrian-oriented mixed-use development, basically designed to support multimodal transportation options, including high-capacity transit. And as you know, in 2026, Bus Rapid Transit, also known as BRT, is coming to Kenmore along Bothell Way. And so the city council asked that the planning commission consider expanding the TOD and making the existing optional rules permanent. So for years, the city has had a TOD overlay zone. And a person in the TOD overlay, and I'm going to show a map in a minute, in a minute, could choose either to develop under the underlying zoning or to develop using the TOD overlay. And so that has been in place, as I said, for several years. I think it was adopted in 2018. And there has been a limited amount of development. And with BRT coming to the city, the city council is very interested in ensuring that this transit supportive development occur. So this is basically the TOD area. And this is the area again that was adopted in 2018. You can see the centerpiece is the Kenmore Park and Ride. It's the blue parcel. It stretches on the north side of northeast Bothell Way between 73rd out to the east boundary of the city. It has a number of underlying zoning districts, and that's why these are all different colors. And I'm going to talk about those in a minute. But in the meantime, the comprehensive plan, which the city council asked that we move forward with last night, has several comments about TOD. The city's vision statement, which is our 20-year vision, says that Kenmore supports bus rapid transit. And then the land use and housing chapters of the plan acknowledge that Kenmore is a high-capacity transit community. That's a regional designation because we are going to have this bus rapid transit. We're a candidate countywide growth center because of our close connection to transit. And high-density residential development is expected near the Park and Ride and downtown, as was permitted in the overlay. There's a new zone with these amendments, the UR zone, that's urban residential. And that is a high-density residential zone. And affordable housing is to be a key feature and not just be an option, but be required. So what are the most significant changes? As I mentioned, the overlay standards are put into the underlying zoning districts or in appropriate chapters. So it's no longer an optional way to develop. It is the new zoning. The new zone is urban residential, and it picks up all of the underlying residential zones on the map. And those were like R24, R18. All those now become a single zone, urban residential. There's a height increase. The current TOD height is 65 feet. The new height limit would be 85 feet. The affordable housing, 25% of the units, this is for rental housing, must be affordable to those at or below 50% of average median income. So that's very low and low-income units to be included in these projects. The parking is reduced to 0.50 stall per unit. That was a trade-off. As you recall, when the financial feasibility was looked at to get so much affordable housing, the parking reduction was important to save developers the cost. And then a new standard about heron rookery protection, this isn't an area near the heron rookery. And the idea is that a habitat management plan would be done and that height and building orientation might be adjusted to make sure that the rookery is protected. Some of the changes are extended to the west, to the actual downtown. That's called downtown commercial zoning. And those include the densities, the increased height and the affordable housing requirements. There's also a standard that says that if you're doing more parking than the minimum, you have to put it in a garage or screen it throughout these two zones, downtown commercial and downtown residential. Currently, that's only required west of 68th. So this would expand it from 68th to 73rd. Development agreement, which is a way to negotiate how a development occurs, would be permitted now in the UR zone. In the public and semi-public zone, that's the zoning that applies to the park and ride lot. And because we know there's a TOD project in the works for that property, the idea was that multifamily needed to be a permitted use. Because we were adding it for that property, we put in an allowance for other properties that are owned, public semi-public properties in the community. But the allowance has to be consistent with surrounding zoning. So it's not, you can't do something out of scale with the surrounding zoning. And then there are a series of miscellaneous amendments, many pages of miscellaneous amendments needed for consistency or to match a regional coalition for housing's affordable housing implementation standards. So what's next? Tonight's public hearing. Are the planning commission final recommendations may be ready on November 1st, which is your next regular meeting. The idea is to hold a joint meeting with the city council in November, tentatively November 21st. That's when it's currently on the schedule. And then code adoption would happen in January. The reason for the timeline for this project is, I think, in fact, one of the commenters mentioned that the city council put a moratorium on development in the TOD because the densities were not high enough. There were a number of townhome projects being proposed. And the council really wanted to see higher density projects around our new BRT station. That moratorium has been in place for a year. It was converted into interim regulations, which also prevent townhomes. But the goal is to have the final code adopted in January so that those interim regulations can be lifted. So that's it. And over to the planning commission.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions before we? We will just.
Commissioners, any questions? We're good? All right. So I will now open the public hearing on the Transit Oriented Development Regulations. We welcome our community members to the planning commission's public hearing. In this forum, the planning commission does not engage or dialogue with the public. The primary role of the planning commission is to listen. Tonight, the public hearing is on Transit Oriented Development Regulations. Please see the agenda packet for details. We will hear from our onsite guests first, followed by our virtual guests. If you are online, please use the raise hand feature now if you wish to speak. All guests must address comments to the chair and the city planning commissioners. The clerk will acknowledge your request and call your name when it is your turn. Your time will start when we confirm that we can hear you. Due to time constraints and to provide fair time to all community members, we must limit each speaker to four minutes. We will not split your time with others or reset your time. Please be sure to state your name and city of residence for the record. Screen sharing is not allowed. You can submit materials to the planning commission or the clerk in advance or no later than the conclusion of this meeting. Please do not comment about other issues before the planning commission or the city council. This meeting is being recorded and we appreciate your taking the time to express comments. So who's first?
First, we have Brian. And then Mark, and then Elizabeth.
My name is Brian Howton, Kenmore. Back to where's, pick up where we left off. The TOD zoning issue is one of those challenges that we have regarding living conditions. Considerations must be given to many factors. The one that the city council has obviously prioritized and reinforced here tonight is the opportunity, is the proximity of Bothell Way. However, this is not the only consideration is determined if this is the correct decision to be made. In my opinion, which is, which is shared by every other person, I have discussed TOD buildings on Northeast 80th Avenue, 80th Avenue Northeast, is negative detrimental and the irreversible impact on those currently living there. That is why I'm here today. The Kenmore City Council has used the emergency moratorium to force the developers for the property right next to 17715 80th Avenue Northeast to build a TOD structure instead of the condos that is appropriate for the neighborhood. Building a TOD structure will absolutely have negative financial and quality of life impacts on treats like townhomes, which is where I live. These impacts must be put front and center of the decisions regarding rezoning our 18th TOD property. Impacts include a 65-foot wall, 2 and 1/2, 25 feet, that will literally block out the sun, the moon and the Kenmore birds, the crows. It will actually directly impact one-third of our residents. So how would you like to have that at your house? 25 feet away, a solid wall, 65 feet tall, not pleasant. Plan includes 50 cars with a driveway literally outside my bedroom. It day in, day out, coming in loud noise. And it's not resident, it's not owner residences, these are renters. They have a different impact, whether we like to admit it or not. There's no guest parking even in the plan. There's no parking, as I mentioned earlier, on Northeast Stadium. Where are they supposed to park? They're going to park in our easement. They're going to invade our territory, our private area. They're going to park in our guest parking and we're going to have to take action and spend money to combat this. In addition, they, they're planning to put the garbage can literally in that same wall. So what nice wharf comes through up Swamp Creek and guess what we get? The garbage spill. You had 50, 50 units there is a lot more garbage per square foot than having eight townhomes. And the townhomes would probably have their garbage inside. Not to mention rats and other, other impact that come along with that. But that results in significant negative impact on our property values, our quality of life, our quality of living. How is the city of Kenmore, you know, going to compensate this? How are we going to make this whole? If you move forward with this, and I don't think you can. Other considerations also impact by the density on Swamp Creek. They've moved the 150-foot zone. You've got 80% occupied, applied capacity over TOD. And you're going to, you're going to destroy even further Swamp Creek because it's not going to get the natural ground saturation and runoff. And we're already struggling to have water levels maintained yearly for the, for bringing back those salmon, right? The other side, the notice we got today was starting.
That's your time. Thank you. Next, we have Mark Carpenter.
Good evening, Mark Carpenter, Kenmore. My comments are short. I have nothing prepared, but I saw the notice and I felt I needed an opinion on the TOD. We moved to Kenmore because we do not want to live in Ballard or Capitol Hill. And the idea of imposing a war on cars in a bedroom community like Kenmore, thinking that everybody is going to just jump on the bus while living in Kenmore is absurd. They will not, they will own cars. They're going to live in Kenmore. The structure proposed at 17715 Northeast 80th is what I wouldn't consider to be nothing more than a human storage container. Giant box full of studio apartments or a place like Kenmore is mostly families in suburban-type living. The emergency declaration that was made by the city council, I think it was in February, calling it a housing emergency, is a little bit suspect too, considering that King County is losing population. Check on the, it's losing population. So timing this with a housing emergency declaration reminds me a little bit of Steve Carell. Declaring it, he didn't say it, he declared it. So come on. I'm opposed to this, 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 we cannot, we, I just, I'm firmly against this giant combuberation that's planned on Northeast Stadium. The developer that purchased the property. The developer that purchased the property is the same developer that directly across the street, and I mean dead across the street, put together an actual beautiful development of townhomes. And that's, you know, high capacity residential, that's considered, you know, high capacity too. And I would support their original plan to build the eight townhomes, which fit nicely into the townhomes that are built along Northeast Stadium. They fit the the architecture. They all, you know, match the theme. And to plop this really sore thumb of a human storage container box right there, 85 feet, well, 65 feet tall. That's just not right. Again, one more time. We did not move to Kenmore and we do not want Kenmore becoming Capitol Hill or Ballard. That's that's just not something we want to see here. Thank you.
Next, we have Elizabeth Mooney, followed by Marsha Fisher.
Yeah, Elizabeth Mooney, Kenmore since 1995. I had something prepared here, but I'm listening to some of the intelligent comments from our citizens. And I'm learning and I guess that comes makes me think of Marilyn Knutson again saying that in citizens, they need the time. It's like making a good oatmeal. If you just have one or two ingredients, doesn't taste so good. You add a few and it takes some time. So basically bring bringing people into this process does not require speed. But we do need the trees. The trees need the sun. People need the sun. The people don't clearly don't want to have a big wall put up next to them. Swamp Creek is right there in the TOD. So I think the community is talking to you. And if you have the power to slow this thing down, planning commission, I would highly recommend that you slow it down and ask the city council to slow it down so that now that we're back in city hall, we can have community meetings. Um, I could read what I have here. It was like my husband said he wished he had more than five minutes to research because people just aren't up to date. I'm sorry, we should be and you've done the work. But anyway, we support the amendments to ensure that the hair and rookery is not affected by development in the TOD area, but would similarly like to see such language included in protecting other wetlands and streams in their buffers. We support the emphasis on Kenmore providing more affordable housing in the TOD district, but we're wary of allowing compliance through offsite accommodation by simply paying cash by the developers. Probably be misused with these accommodations. So cut that out, please. Support the requirements for walkways and non-vehicle access, making the downtown more walkable will provide an alternative to car centered travel, although limiting the parking spaces to point five spaces per resident will be an incentive to reduce the number of cars per family. We fear the downtown parking may become an issue. And in that spiral of action, reaction, we'll soon have parking enforcement staff on our police force. Not sure that in the balancing of environmental regulations in parking that will be preserving the environment. One other thing, I know Marsha, or I think Marsha was bringing up Lake Point and Lake Point hasn't happened, right? So it's really hard to plan a city when the thing that it incorporated on was this Matka site model toxics control oxide that was a dumping station and it might be the source. And yes, there are toxins out there and Department of Ecology presently does not know who the developer is or if there's anybody there. So it's pretty much stagnant and I think you should bring that up. As far as I know, as of today, there is nobody planning to purchase Lake Point as opposed to a year ago. And by the way, Lake Point is right next to the asphalt company. And that company that is spewing out emissions that are not up to standard is going to be putting emissions this direction. And it does not look good if you put affordable housing in the midst of asphalt fumes that are not up to standard. So I would highly recommend that that you pivot and you tell the council and the staff that first we get rid of the pollution that is at Lake Point and the asphalt plant. And you get that fixed, save the trees, save, save the wetlands. What's good for salmon in our streams is good for our people. And the people are speaking, they don't want a big. Thank you.
Next, we have Marsha and then we will move to our virtual guest. We have John Paul Mickel, Christopher Olson, Stacy Valenzuela, Jan Howard, Scott Inslee and Alicia. I'm going to start promoting a couple of our virtual guests. Please keep your mics muted and your video off. Thank you.
Hello, Marsha Fisher. I just wanted a personal comment to make about the DOT and the dependence upon what seems to be one of the focal points is the rapid transit. Again, I don't know what the empirical data is that the Growth Management Act on down here to the city council or the planning commission relies upon, but there's some practical features to think about. I understand the idea of urban emissions. I understand the idea of high density, et cetera. But when you have people coming to your community who need transportation to get to work, since Kenmore itself doesn't seem to have a huge economic base offering large companies and a great part of their population, the opportunity to live and work in the same community. You're asking people to move into a community to rely upon that transit system. So as a practical matter, I don't know how many of you ride the bus. I periodically have to ride the bus when my car breaks down because I have only one car. I work in Redmond. So to give you a practical understanding, the commute is achievable by three buses to get to downtown Redmond, which and they do mean near the Redmond Town Center. So a commute that by car right now, no disrespect to the city of Kenmore. I always slow down the most when I get here into the Kenmore as opposed to Bothell's curve. But it can take depending upon the weather conditions and the time of year, anywhere from half an hour to 45 minutes, half an hour being the dream. But by bus, I would double that and sometimes slightly more than double because of the just, it's not just that one system. You know, you think of the rapid transit and great that it's going to be going down Bothell Way, but it's not going to take me to where I need to go, which means I then have to inter respond to other systems, local regional systems to get to my destination. So when you're talking about missing middle or you're talking about affordable housing or you're talking about just the increased intensity here in this community, you need to understand what is your community? Where are they going to work? How are they going to get there? Because getting me here down to Cascadia is achievable. Beyond that is not. So your control, not your control, because you don't do the rapid transit system. But and when you're thinking about this, you need to think beyond just the feel of the theoretical idea that this would be wonderful for all of us to commute. I had the good fortune in life to be living in London for a period of time. And of course, everyone knows they have the tube system and it is a beautiful system. It's also centuries old, but it really is lovely to get around a city in rapid transit. They also don't have as many hills or bodies of water or natural obstacles. You have to take into consideration that the obstacles here are, we have this lake, we have communities around them. We have systems that are independent, not centralized, such as a major city of New York or London, as I was referring to. And think of that practicality. Theoretically, it sounds lovely. Wish it was possible. I don't see that possible anytime in the near future because the infrastructure that you are trying to accomplish is not there. And I don't see it materializing to be an effective component of what you are considering during your discussion about the overlay. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to our online guest. We're going to start with John Paul, followed by Christopher Olson, then Stacy Valenzuela.
This is John Paul Mickel from Kenmore. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
The planning commission's proposed amendments to the city's rules related to transit oriented development, including the creation of a new zoning district, urban residential needs significant changes. Currently, the planning commission is proposing that in this new zoning district, if developers of multi-unit dwellings would only be required to provide five parking spaces per 10 units, as well as only one visitor parking space per 10 units. If the development is for senior citizens, then no parking is required. Furthermore, the planning commission is allowing developers to count on street parking towards meeting their requirement. Considering the average American family has an average of two vehicles per unit, the parking requirements specified earlier by the planning commission are inadequate for the city of Kenmore. Every new multi-unit dwelling built to date in Kenmore has led to an increase in street parking. And there was, and that was with better parking requirements to start with, i.e. more than point five per unit. This radically extreme reduction in parking per unit being proposed will exacerbate the street parking throughout the zone and spill over into adjacent neighborhoods. If you want to make it tougher for pedestrians and bicyclists, then encourage street parking. The planning commission needs to require more parking per unit and not count street parking in meeting the requirement. Having no parking for senior citizen developments is a total failure. Where do caregivers park? Where will home healthcare visiting nurses park? Where will facility property management and service workers park? Are senior citizens not allowed to have visitors? And if they are, where were they parked? My father is currently 85 years old, lives in assisted living facility for senior citizens. He still drives. And one of the leading factors for the selection of his home was the proximity of where he could park his car to his front door. Senior citizens lead active lives for many years. And while they are able, should be able to enjoy the freedom of controlling when they travel and to wear on demand and in their own vehicle. This requires parking onsite. The planning commission is mixing urban residential housing into the very limited areas that Kenmore has for the development of small to medium sized businesses. This should be avoided at all costs. It was said by the mayor in public remarks several times that when he first arrived in Kenmore, he thought of it as a bedroom community. Someplace people slept at the end of the day, but went elsewhere to work and play. He said this disparagingly, and I agree with him. Kenmore should not be the housing solution to Seattle's problem. Kenmore should be protecting our limited spaces that are designated for business so we can have at least some of the people that live here to also work here as well as not having to travel to Linwood or Bothell for some services. It would be great if the city spent more time developing places for Kenmore citizens to work and play and not just building bedroom upon bedroom, consuming all of the available real estate and even building 85 feet or above into the sky, blocking the views of our lake, our hills and our iconic pine tree. 10 years ago, planners were projecting population growth in Kenmore of 2% per year. We've only gotten half of that prediction. In fact, last year we had a 2% of our population leave Kenmore. We need to stop working to make Kenmore the next lake city. Keep our wide open areas, keep parking convenient, keep our business spaces and abuse the lake, hills and iconic pine tree unobstructed. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Christopher Olson.
Hello. Chris Olson, resident of Kenmore. So to start with, the cost to construct a single parking space varies. However, a very low value for this region is about $60,000 for one spot. So if we need three parking spaces, you know, one for where you live, one for the business you're going to, and just another one for maybe another business somewhere. We're talking $180,000. The average is actually closer to about $100,000 per space. So now we're talking the price of a condo. One that I actually bought previously. I don't live there now, but I've purchased a place for the same price as three parking spaces in this area. If we want more affordable housing or places for the elderly in this region, quite frankly, we need to be considering giving options that have less or even have no parking. There are plenty of options that have parking. If people want to live in a place that has parking, they can move to it. This is about creating choices for people rather than using government zoning to restrict the diversity of choice that people have, which is what we've been doing for the last 60 years. In addition, I would say that we also have large areas of parking that are usually not full. People can park there and they can walk to other places if there are amenities and places close to walk to. So with that, I would really like to see some mixed use development as part of these TOD requirements. I would like to see amenities on the first floor of these TOD buildings. That way, people who live adjacent to it will get some benefit from these places. I would like to see plazas and green spaces out front. I would like to see standards in place that would help rehabilitate and improve wetlands and natural areas or perhaps even daylight culverts if we can ever get to a place where we're building TOD near culverts. These are things that can be done with the investment that TOD would bring. Lastly, I shouldn't say lastly, next up though. Historically, we've built parking around transit stations, forcing people to use transit to drive to transit, which is backwards in my mind, right? We don't want traffic, yet we're forcing people who don't want to sit in traffic. We don't want to be a part of traffic to drive to be a part of transit. I would really like to see TOD so that way people who want to use transit or who have a job in Seattle or Cascadia or Bothell and are along this major transit line to be able to use that so they aren't driving it in the way of someone who does need to go to Redmond. In addition, I would like to see the city begin to push for transit lines that take us to Kirkland and Redmond as I think that those are going to be the major corridors that we will not have effective or frequent or reliable transit to. And we don't have it now. And as we heard a previous speaker say, it's difficult, right? If you need three buses and your buses aren't running frequently, that's going to take you a long time. So we need to see that. The state is pushing TOD and I mean, I keep hearing, sorry, the state's pushing TOD and they're pushing it because they're making investments in transit, billions of dollars of investments in transit. And in order for that transit investment to pay off, there needs to be people who can use it. And if everyone has to drive to it, the capacity will never be there or the demand, I should say, would never be there. I keep hearing people talk about Ballard and other places, but what about downtown Bothell or Kirkland or Redmond? Those areas are all very nice and TOD.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Next, we have Stacy Valenzuela, then Jan Howard.
Stacy Valenzuela, Kenmore. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I hope you support KMC 187730 with the requirements of 25% affordable housing units in any development in the TOD adopted by the council per 220543 and 220555. If we really want action of increased affordable housing unit inventory and implementation, the planning permit department and the city manager need to support and enforce the adoption by city council. No buyout or in lieu. And I would support the planning department extension of the TOD overlay urban corridor to the Bothell border on 522, but only if the Heron Rookery and Swamp Creek have a covenant protecting them and the height limit is below 35 feet. Additional floor would height would be allowed for affordable housing units. Why is the TOD being renamed urban? And I'm concerned, does the attached ordinance 220555 that support these protections and height limits get attached to the urban corridor? Does the protection of the rookery and increased needs of local affordable housing stay? As we have seen, if you have no workers in the area, businesses close. In 2019, 85% of low income households were cost burdened. As of 2019, there were 27 out of every 100 units needing to be extremely low affordable housing. The King County dashboard lists 66% of our families in Kenmore are cost burdened. Three years in the pandemic has only made this worse. The developers on the city's planning department panel agreed requiring the 25% or more of the units to be very low affordable housing is reasonable and the only way our inventories will be increased. We need your help to extend the ordinance on 220543 and 0555 with no loopholes with 25% higher requirements for affordable housing. I think the height limits presented by the planning commission. I think the height limits presented by the Planning Commission previously as part of the Affordable Housing Ordinance should be adopted of all the TOD at the 60 feet. They work so hard to protect our Heron and project our environment only if adding substantial affordable housing where height limits increased. I suggest we wait and do not extend the increased density of the planning department or add the urban residential zone. The projected sound transit may be adding 1,200-plus units at the corner of 73rd. We already need an inventory on projects and work, approximately 1,800 added density. Kenmore has already met the required density for the next five years, and until beyond 2026, we are not a high-capacity city or high-transit city. Keep the commission's previous TOD recommendation. It mirrors the signed K4C commitment of Kenmore for climate change to allow density along the transit corridor, walkability along the transit corridor, and accelerate climate action while saving money and investing in our community. Although we appreciate the input, we should not allow, or we should allow our residents, not developers, to decide the land zoning restrictions to protect and preserve our land resources and the quality of life or our future of Kenmore. We are also facing uncertain times if employees will continue to work from home or even go into offices. Both employees and businesses have seen huge savings. Will this have a huge effect on future transportation? I think so. It might be so long before transit, sound transit, and light rail even come into Kenmore. Thank you, and please consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valenzuela. Next, we have Jan Howard.
Hi, Jan Howard, Kenmore. I wanted to speak up on behalf of the existing community members impacted by the change in zoning for the TOD. We understand the need for affordable housing and missing middle housing, especially close to the transit arterial on 522. There are many planned developments along 522 that will provide high-density apartment, condo, and retail space, all in areas that currently experience the high-traffic volume and have adequate traffic management for this type of commercial and residential demands. Recently, we learned that the property at 17715 80th Avenue Northeast is now zoned for high-density TOD development. What we thought would be welcome missing-middle townhouses, similar to existing recent density development, including where I live at Creekside Townhomes, is now being planned as a six-story, 55-unit apartment building on what is a really small lot with poor traffic access, as other speakers have commented. This specific area, which is off of 522, has been developed over the past many years as missing-middle housing. It is comprised primarily of townhouse complexes, predominantly with some duplexes, and then single-family homes of varying sizes, ages, and prices. This development will seriously impact the quality of life and the value of existing homes, missing-middle homes, in the immediate surroundings, both by blocking light and views and introducing significantly higher traffic volumes, safety issues, and noise. As it is, there is not adequate parking for the current housing built. Years ago and after several serious accidents, much street parking had to be removed so drivers could see approaching traffic before pulling out. Now, each of our communities have issues with unauthorized user parking, whether to take the bus, use the Burke Gilman, park cars for local car lots, visit a different neighborhood, et cetera. Not to mention, there are limited sidewalks to protect residents and visitors to the area in walking from the limited parking to their intended destination. There are no crosswalks, there are no plans for crosswalks, there are no plans for sidewalks, there are no turn lanes. The traffic already backs up the road several blocks during peak times. TOD zoning only makes sense along 522 where the traffic flow is adequately managed and planned for on properties with ample parking, like the proposed development where the old Italian restaurant was near Kenmore Lanes. Please focus TOD high-density in areas where it's most manageable and improves the quality of the community rather than throwing six-story buildings among existing low-rise missing-middle housing. Please do not shoehorn these developments into residential neighborhoods that do not have the infrastructure to accommodate their impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Scott Insley.
Hello, this is Scott. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Boy, I'm not prepared. My head is swimming right now with a lot of information. I've been in Kenmore since 1995, raised my family here, and God forbid, I love my American dream of being on Finn Hill in a single-family home. I understand there's potentially the need for TOD-type accommodations. However, that is, I think, the misnomer that the city council and the planning commission is hanging their hats on in the fact that it's not just downtown. It's going to go up to Finn Hill, there's going to be lack of parking, lack of parking downtown. People will be parking on the streets, increasing security issues, crime, consequences of people being, you know, hurt, walking, biking with inadequate infrastructure. I'm just kind of like, this whole conversation to me seems like it's in a vacuum. I don't believe that this discussion really is going to take us anywhere productive because the foregone conclusion between the council and the planning commission is that TOD is where we're headed. And again, I'm not versed in the processes and procedures of these public communications, but I definitely will research that. And it just seems like it's a ploy to build Kenmore into, increase the taxable property tax base. Everything is benefiting the city of Kenmore to expand their tax base. Just like I mentioned earlier, the secret, you know, 12 midnight deal to purchase the Cozy Inn without any citizen input at all. I'm curious to find out when the council and the planning commission do require citizen input before they take initiative and do things before they have to involve any other citizen response. That is your claim to fame, is we take initiative, we do it as we see it to the best of our city. But I think, you know, the... It's just, again, I'm not prepared to, 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 I'm sorry that I'm not prepared better to explain this, but I just believe that the city council is simply looking at an expanded tax base, which is to their benefit. TOD is definitely an expanded tax base. It's going to push up into the hill. It's not just that 522 corridor, that's the main focus. But that's again where the city council and the planning commission swivel their hips and say, this is what it's all about. But they know the real revenue opportunity is to expand outside that 522 TOD district that they're referring to. So again, I'm sorry, I'm not better prepared. I'll do my research, I appreciate your time and consideration, I appreciate the other people that have made comments. I think some of the folks, maybe Ballard is where you want to move, because I came from Ballard, and I moved from Ballard for the very reason that Ballard has become what it is today. And that's not where I wanted to raise my family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Insley. Next, we have Alicia.
Hi, Alicia Kelly, Kenmore. I'm here in full support of the comments that have been made by Brian Houghton, Mark, and Jan Howard. I wish I was as eloquent as them, but I am not, and I think that Jan's speech hit the nail right on the head. I moved to Kenmore five years ago, and I live in a neighboring community, Pendleton Condominiums. And I am here on behalf of my entire community expressing sincere concern and a plea to please do not put in any type of apartments on 17715 80th Avenue. As all my neighbors have already expressed, this council has already approved significant housing increase on 80th and its adjacent streets. Over the past five years, there have been close to 600 homes and communities that have been built in this street alone. This has caused significant traffic. I appreciate the fact that this council believes that by reducing the number of available parking is directly linked to the fact that residents and renters will not have cars. That is fictional. They will still have cars, but what will happen is they will now lean on other neighboring communities and use our parking spots. My community has zero free parking. My community complains frequently that this council has taken away all of our street parking, and now we are reduced to a garage and one spare parking spot. We will now be fighting with residents coming and stealing our parking spots. We are already doing this, and we have to call multiple tow agencies frequently to get these cars removed. But beyond this, the other issue that we have is the complete lack of road safety. We, these is, we live on a two-lane road with zero parking, zero sidewalks, and zero crosswalks. Between 522 and 240th, we have eight child bus stops. Eight bus stops that have zero lighting and that we force our children to cross the street in the middle of dead night between, between November and February. We also, when I, I know that this council also, or the city, announced the pedestrian facility plan, facilities plan back in April. I reached out and I asked where 80th Avenue was on this list and was told quite flippantly, pretty far down the list, number 38 and in the 50s. How can you expect to build up such high-density living when you haven't even considered the safety and the well-being of the residents that currently live there? The other thing that I think that Jan brought up that was completely on point was that in the mornings when there's high traffic, you cannot get in and out of our driveways. Not only that, I wait five minutes just to cross the street because of significant traffic and lack of cars slowing down. I think that building any kind of high-density apartments is a very poor decision, and I support having a small townhouse community, as has been proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Colleen Anderson, followed by James Olson.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, so I don't have a ton to say, I kind of not as versed in this topic as I should be, but I did want to kind of reiterate some of the points about the parking issues and the challenges of the traffic and in looking at the density buildings in downtown Core, Spencer 68, the link, I can't remember the other names of the buildings there. And the fact that today, those are all rentals. At this point, they don't have enough parking for their existing renters, along with any parking for their visitors. So someone had mentioned earlier about home caregivers and all of that. We run into that very same issue with having to have parking just to be able to provide. Although he doesn't have a car, we actually pay for parking so that the caregivers and suchnot can come in and help service our elderly relative. And he walks around everywhere, and there is nowhere to walk, and there is nowhere for him to, he can't walk and go shopping, it's not safe enough. It's, you know, from a mobility perspective, but there's really not much else to do. I mean, he can walk to the library, and he can walk to the Safeway. But if you're going to have people living in density farther from that core, there's nothing, and you don't have cars. There, that's very difficult to get to Safeway or, you know, anywhere else for shopping and any other amenities. So I do think that, going back to kind of my comments with the missing middle too with this, was we really need to focus on making sure we have the infrastructure to support the density we want to bring and do the density in a manner that works for the, our area that we have. I understand we need to increase affordable housing and we need to increase the density, but I do think we need to take a step back and really do some due diligence and planning. And then with the affordable housing, I don't, I, again, not super versed with what's in place for the existing rentals, but when we were looking at it, it didn't seem like there was anything really firm. So I would like to see that there be a little bit more firm requirements and transparency to that affordable housing if we are going to go forward with things in the TOD that require it. We may have that, I just don't have the knowledge of it. Based on what we experienced with the Spencer 68, it seemed like that didn't really exist. So that's all I had to say, but again, just based on my experience. Oh, one second thing was the bus. I hope the transit, the rapid transit improves the bus situation. But I would agree, I think it was Krista mentioned, you know, how, and if the city can help expand it to things like Kirkland, and, you know, it helped increase that, and that would help then all of the rest of the infrastructure problems. But as it exists today, just getting quicker to Bothell isn't going to help those of us who need to get to Redmond, Bellevue, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have James Olson, followed by Annie M. and Corey Holder. Mr. Olson, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, I'm James Olson, I live on 62nd Avenue Northeast. I heard someone mentioning that not having enough parking causes people to do more parking on the street, and that endangers pedestrians and cyclists. This simply isn't true. If you ask that person, I guarantee you they are not a cyclist, I would have to talk to myself. The fact is that the more parking you provide, the more driving you're going to have people on the roads, you're going to actually encourage people to drive more. And the problem with our infrastructure, and this is why, when you say we don't have the infrastructure we need, is we have designed our infrastructure for people to drive, and only to drive, not to use mass transit, not ready to walk or to bike. We've made it focused on driving only, which by the way, increases your traffic because the only choice you have is to use your car. We make it difficult to use buses, we make it difficult to use mass transit, we make it difficult to walk, to walk, we make it difficult to bike, not just difficult, we make it dangerous to do those things. This over-focus on keeping the things the way they were for the last 50 years is just insane. And I see people stick their heads in more because they don't want change, they don't want to read about how this stuff works. They get upset when anything's going to change the way it was, and the bottom line is, we got to stop this insanity. We keep trying to like, look, we got to drive over where you need to go, guess what? We got 522 to drive, we got 405 to drive. If we got too much traffic and you're worried about safety along the sides of the streets for your buses, make it so you have less driving going on. Take, take some of the roads and make them green streets, reduce the actual ability for cars to get around. They'll find other ways to get around, especially when we provide other ways to get around, which we're not doing right. So I'm kind of frustrated with what I'm seeing with this because I see people just thinking the same way they have for the last five decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Annie M.
Hi, my name is Annie Matthews. I live in Oakland, I mean, I live in Kenmore. And I moved from downtown Oakland to Kenmore about two years ago because I wanted to improve my quality of life at a place where it was still considered affordable and convenient and enjoyable. And I have enjoyed living where I live most of the time since I moved here and to the Creekside Townhouse, which is adjacent to the 17715 80th Avenue Northeast. And I've enjoyed it, it's a nice, it's a walkable community, I can walk to the store, and, you know, I can, I used to go into work in Seattle, I took buses every day until pandemic, of course. But recently, we learned about the developer purchasing this property, 17715 80th Avenue was forced to drop their original proposal of building a eight-unit townhouse to a six-floor building. And that actually had caused me actually want to move again because it's directly impacted me. I know it's not only about me, it's about the, a lot of affordable housing and all that, but I am speaking for me, so it's affecting me, and this is because I'm working from home now. Outside of my window, well, I'm going to have to endure the construction for at least two years. And after it's going to be built, it will block all my sun, and it will, outside my window, is going to be the proposed garbage collection area. And so I, I find that is really unreasonable for the part. Firstly, you know, the traffic, you know, one part is that the traffic and parking is already a big issue on the 80th Avenue Northeast, as you have heard from other people. And so to, to allow this, this property, a small property, to develop into a multi-level high-density high-density housing will even worsen the traffic and parking issue on this street. And I believe that reduction of the parking to the requirement to point five stall per unit is really just unrealistic. The fact is, most households have at least one vehicle. And in the earlier presentation on the TOD, it was stated reducing to point five stall per unit is to save developer money. So I would like to ask, how about consider your current and future resident instead of saving the developer money? And how is the city going to address the increased traffic and parking issue? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Next we have Corey Holder.
Hi, my name is Corey Holder. I live on seventy-third and one hundred and eighty-second in Kenmore. Um, I'm not, personally, I'm not opposed to, uh, TOD. I'm opposed to the way that the city is going to implement it. And I guess I don't have any confidence in the city, the council and the staff in implementing this in a way that is actually equitable. Just drop like twenty million dollars on wanting to drive where an Eightieth needs that more. Another, I don't know how many millions on sixty-eighth. Doesn't really need it, but these are all just to put bike lanes in. Uh, I think next year we have like the five million dollars slated to overlay seventy-third avenue from one hundred and eighty-first to one hundred and ninety-second. Road doesn't need to be overlaid. I know paving doesn't need, doesn't require it. It's just to put bike lanes in, which reduces parking. This is the highest density area in the city right here with all these multifamily homes, apartments, condos, yada yadas, you know, senior living. There's like seven parking spots on seventy-third from one hundred and eighty-first to one hundred and ninety-second, or going to be. Um, so it's just, I just don't understand how Eightieth is not being developed. Um, as far as the walkable, walkable and bike, bikeable, you know, we're putting in all the, all those bike lanes to go where? Like everything's being built to get people out of Kenmore. What, why do we want to stay here and do things here and and spend money here? There's nothing really, there's nothing to do. Like there's no amenities. I mean, yeah, we got the parks and they're great. I mean, I'm not trying to take away from any of that, but you know, what are the other amenities? Is there going to be like a commercial and retail requirement for the ground floor in, in these new developments? Where everything I've heard, there, there isn't. So, you know, where all these people that are going to be moving here, what are they going to do? They're just going to go other places which require cars. You know, especially with these, these in lieu payments, basically just pay the city off to look the other way so that they could, the developers can just make more money. Um, a lot of things that I hear is just the city and the staff just doing things selfishly for what they want. And not necessarily for what the people that pay their salaries want, what the citizens want. Um, just things, it just sounds like everything, a lot of things are just being taken away. I know we're going to get like the TOD, it's going to come, it's going to happen, it's, you know, but I think a lot more thought needs to be taken into account on how this is going to look and how it's actually going to impact the current citizens. So that's, that's all I got. I'm sorry, I wasn't really prepared like everybody else, but I just wanted to get those out there.
Thank you. We have, um, no more public comments.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, last chance, whether you're here or on the Zoom, please, uh, let us know if you would like to speak.
We have Kimberly Taylor, a virtual guest. Give me just a moment to promote her to panelist. Kimberly, if you see that join as panelist, you have to click on that to to be promoted. Go ahead, Kimberly. Kimberly, you have to, um, click unmute.
Hi, Kimberly Taylor. Um, I'm trying to find my document that I actually had. If you could just give me a moment. There we go. Here we go. Uh, Kimberly Taylor, fifteen-year Kenmore resident. Good evening, Planning Commission. I reside in the transit-oriented development area. I understand its purpose to revitalize the city's core by creating incentives and opportunities for a mix of jobs and residences cultivating a respectful relationship among development within the district. The natural environment, nearby traditional neighborhoods, and incentive to preserve significant tree groves where they exist. To educate myself on the issue of rezoning, I read the final revised vision statement, land use element, housing element, missing middle housing code amendments and zoning district changes. The recurring themes I saw on these documents were, one, environmental stewardship, preservation of trees, waterways, wildlife, reducing climate change, and emphasis on tree retention as indiscriminate removal or destruction of trees conflicts with city values. Two, enhancing the exceptional quality of life in residential neighborhoods, including the physical and mental well-being of residents, a community where people love where they live. Three, diversity of housing types that complement the neighborhoods in which they occupy. Create a consistent and compatible pattern of development within residential neighborhoods, access parking and other standards, ensuring compatibility between different building types. So my questions are these. How is a proposed six-story, sixty-five-feet-tall apartment building, a hundred and fifty feet from Swamp Creek, where twelve healthy, viable, mature trees will be destroyed in order to build, preserve the tree canopy per the climate action plan? And how does this align with the city's emphasis on tree retention? Two, how is this same proposed six-story building that will block out its nearest neighbor's daylight and the view of the sky with a roll-up metal garage door used day and night, twenty feet from their building, enhance their physical or mental well-being or contribute to them loving where they live? And finally, how is the same proposed six-story building compatible with the surrounding neighborhood of single-family homes, townhomes and condos when it will tower over its tallest neighbor with reduced parking in an area with little to no street parking for overflow, thus putting the onus on neighboring complexes to monitor for illegal parking? Thank you for your time.
Sorry, we have no further comments.
Is Rita, are we clear?
Yeah, my mic was turned off, so people on Zoom couldn't hear me.
Okay, so, last chance, folks. I know that some people have difficulty hitting the right buttons, so I just want to give everyone a chance. All right. The public hearing on the transit-oriented development regulations hereby closed. The next item is, uh, regarding the, uh, good of the order. I understand that, uh, Marielle, you wish a point of personal privilege?
Yes, thank you. I, I am requesting a point of personal privilege.
Uh, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Chairman Thompson. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank, um, each and every resident of Kenmore that came this evening. I know, um, when we're busy with work and with life and children, families, our elders, even, you know, our dogs or cats, um, taking the time to come and being part of this process is extremely important, but it is also extremely appreciated. And, and I think, um, I could say that for each and every one of us on the commission, we really are very thankful for folks for coming out and being part of this process and sharing their thoughts. With that being said, um, I'd like to share that, um, it's with a heavy heart that I have tendered my resignation to the commission, to Chairman Thompson. Um, I've recently been diagnosed with a form of leukemia and am needing to take time to tend to my health, tend to my family and to really focus on, on getting better, um, because it's important to my family. I am so appreciative of the partnership and the thoughtfulness that everyone on the commission has displayed in my nine months of being part of this body. Or I guess I could say ten months of being part of this body. Um, I don't think that it, it's oftentimes apparent out in the public view, all of the preparation that each and every one of you do and take time on to prepare for our conversations and for these, um, the consideration of everything that goes before the planning commission. And I just want to give a very big thank you to all of you, my fellow commissioners. I also want to give a big heartfelt appreciation to staff for answering our questions, answering some of the questions I've had. I know that especially those first few months, they were very basic type of questions, but I am just so appreciative of Lori and Debbie and everyone in the city of Kenmore, um, staff who have come and presented to us, um, our particular consultants as well. As we really have dived deep into a lot of nuanced issues um, with the comprehensive plan update and other discussions that it is, it's been so critical to have that thought partnership together. And I just, again, want to share my appreciation to you all. And then just one, one last thought. Um, and I want to share a quote from Father Greg Boyle, and, um, some of you may be familiar of his work. He's the founder of Homeboy Industries in the city of Los Angeles. Um, that's the city where I was born and raised by my parents. Um, and Homeboy Industries is an organization that does a lot of work in helping folks get back on their feet. Um, oftentimes recovering, um, from addiction, um, or from life of violence. Um, and the quote from Father Boyle is that there is no them and us, there is only us. And as I hear, heard the conversation this evening and the conversations over these last few months, it's really important to focus in that there is only us. It is up to us as a community to solve these really complex and difficult questions of housing and affordable housing, of climate change, of assuring and maintaining our green spaces and making sure that our community is welcoming for all. And again, I just want to give my thanks and appreciation to you. I'll be watching you work. Um, and again, I just really appreciate you all. Thank you.
On behalf of the city, um, and I'm sure you'll be hearing from the mayor and other council members that we greatly appreciate all of your time and as you, uh, have such an eloquent farewell speech, that's just how you are in everything that you do. And we will certainly miss you. And does anyone else want to say anything? Yes, go ahead. Council member, me, yes, Commissioner. See, so I'm really messing you up today, Commissioner Lutzes.
Uh, Marielle, I just want to start by saying thank you for all of your dedicated time and your devotion to the service of this city. Um, I want to say my thoughts and prayers are with you and I wish you a speedy recovery. Um, it will certainly be different without you, but I want to say it's been a joy working alongside you and I've learned a lot from you. And, you know, I think you'll leave an impact on the commission as you leave. So again, thank you.
Commissioner Warren Wykoff?
Uh, yeah, I, I just want to say thank you, Marielle, and, uh, wish you all the best. And, uh, I, I promise to always keep a little piece of your, um, ideology in a corner of my brain where there's undoubtedly lots of room, um, to, to keep your, keep your presence here. Thank you.
Commissioner Ben Soski.
Marielle, I just want you to know that I love you and yeah, that's all.
Go ahead.
Hi, Marielle. I just want to let you know, whatever, if you need anything. I know I can, not just speaking for myself, but all of us here would be more than happy to do anything that you need. If you need help or just, uh, an ear, and I want to say thank you. Your gracefulness is inspiring. So, good luck. You're in my thoughts. And take care of yourself, take care of your family. Your decision is admirable. Um, be good to yourself and, and self-care as much as possible.
I, uh, previously sent an email when she, when Marielle sent me an email, so, um, you know how I feel and I think that I share all the, uh, comments and your former, um, gracious and everything that I am on this microphone. So, thank you so much. Now officially, she has resigned effective tomorrow. Because tonight is her last meeting. So, starting, um, until we get another replacement from the council, there will be six of us. So it still takes four to pass something off to the council. Oh, you told, you told us, you have a list of our dates and you told us tonight that's November first. Planning for the, that's if we can get this done in two weeks. I'm, I'm talking to the staff now for those who, see, it's so wonderful now that instead of talking to the Zoom screen, I can actually see live staff. It's a whole new, a whole new experience.
Right. So the plan is that on the first, uh, we will, fingers crossed, have, uh, as we've done in the past, a matrix of comments. So it'll be the written comments, the letters, the emails, et cetera, with staff response to some of the points. And then, um, we'll be ready hopefully to address your questions. And then if you're able to make your, um, recommendation on that evening, then we would schedule the city council meeting, but
As we discussed.
Yes, right.
Now, just so that the, if I may say so, the public is aware that although we have a timeframe, that does not mean that if we make some decisions to make some amendments and we do not get our job quote done by the next meeting, we can go on to the, the meeting thereafter. But I want everyone who spoke tonight, as well as those who have been speaking to us for the last several months, that we are taking your, um, issues to heart and that we will be considering them. I, I personally found several of the comments particularly interesting. Um, and I know that some of the issues that were brought up are issues that, and concerns that are shared by some of the commissioners. So, but just to reiterate, uh, we do have the meeting next in two weeks that is going to be, um, focused on your, uh, responses to us and, um, and any others that we get between now and the next meeting. Is there any else, anything else that's for the good of the order? Or Lutzes?
I, I would just like to reiterate what my colleagues have said. Thank you to all of the, um, citizens who came out tonight to comment. We appreciate your input and your opinions. It, what, it is what drives our work. Um, we've been working on the TOD for, how long has it been, Lori?
Oh. Well, we first started talking about it last summer and then periodic meetings through sort of interwoven.
So we've discussed the TOD for over a year now. Um, it has been a long, slow process. We've worked by it step by step. And I just want to say, you know, sometimes it is difficult to try and accurately represent the position of the citizens when our audience is empty and no one attends our meetings. We like the public hearing because that usually encourages others to come and finally voice their opinions and it gives us, uh, it gives us material to work with. And so we will try and address these points as best as we can. Um, now that we have a, a, a good amount of input to work with. Um, but also I, I do want to say that coming up on our docket as well, we will be working with the transportation element. So if there are individuals still in attendance, um, who are concerned with, uh, bicycle and pedestrian safety or the safety of eightieth avenue and things like that, I would encourage them, please, please participate in all of our meetings on the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, which is what will be coming up soon. Um, and, and there's, that, that deals more specifically with, uh, pedestrian safety. It deals with sidewalks and deals with the prioritization of projects, um, and all of those other elements. So I just want to encourage you. We, we love to have you here. We love to see your faces. We love your input. And, uh, again, we meet the first and third Tuesday of every month. It's always an open meeting. Our agendas are always posted and we would love to have you here. I know sometimes that's difficult for certain individuals, but we also encourage you to submit your opinions via email or mail or phone call, however you want to do it. We're, we're willing in here to take your, your comments and opinions. It's, it's what informs our work and how we can most accurately represent you. Thank you.
I would like to also emphasize phone calls. Um, I've only in, let's see now, about twenty-two months, I've only received two phone calls about planning commission issues. Of course, I've gotten more than that from staff, but, but from the citizens. Uh, so, um, I, I think phone calls are a good thing and we like to hear from, uh, the, our residents because that's what we're here for. Anything else? And Lori and Debbie, do you have a last?
Now, I, I know you like phone calls. The issue with phone calls is it's hard to document. That's why it's better to have comments in writing. So if you do have a phone call, I would still encourage the person that you're talking with to submit their comments in writing. So it becomes past the record.
I always ask them to do that.
And I felt sure that you would.
Which is good, but you know, sometimes people do like to chat or you run into them on the street. And of course, most, most people maybe don't know who we are. So anyway, well, if there's nothing further, it is, uh, eight fifty-eight and the meeting is adjourned.